Okay. Good evening, welcome to the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of February 24th, 2014.
Fifteen.
Uh, I'm sorry, 2015.
Yeah.
Members present are Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hibeto Gonzalez.
Uh, present.
Uh, Diana Rio.
Yes.
Álvaro Lurido.
Yeah.
Uh, myself, Joe Paz. Also present is Juan Pena, Planning and Zoning Director, and Jose Villalobos, City Attorney.
That's the one supposed to be in the room. Good evening.
Good evening.
I, um, I was advising Mr. Pena that, um, all the statements, uh, testimonies are supposed to be on the road, so anybody that's supposed to testify, repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and not simply the truth.
I do. Uh, first item on your agenda tonight is the old business approval minutes from, uh, June 24th, 2014.
You need a motion to be approved? The minutes? I didn't hear it.
No, no, no motion yet. I need a motion.
I can make a, sorry, I can make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay. The motion was, there was a motion and it was seconded on the motion Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hibeto Gonzalez.
Yes.
Diana Rio.
Yes.
Álvaro Lurido.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you. On your new business agenda item number one, property address is 6210 Southwest H Street. Mo Burger and Anthony Lopez, applicants requesting a sign permit for the architectural PVC letters for the front elevation of the building at 6210 Southwest H Street. Before you, you have an application with a memorandum with my recommendation. It's for the, uh, pictures that you have in front of you which has a box sign with a new insert that was put onto it, uh, Fajas Colombianas, and also the letters above it to be placed, they're superimposed at this point, which is Belesa Feminina. Uh, both of these signs combined are twenty-one point three eight square feet of the forty-three that's allowed on the front elevation of that property under section twenty-two of the zoning ordinance, two eighty-two. The item in the back is something that was added this mo- this afternoon, something the gentleman wished. I informed him that, that is no longer allowed under the new ordinance, and, uh, he's here if you have any questions. Name an address for the rec. En micro, su nombre y dirección.
Okay. Eh, mi nombre es Victor Uribe. Mi dirección es 6210 Southwest 8th Street. Um, el señor que fue a tomar la fotos hoy me dijo que ahí había un, un micro perforado.
The gentleman that went to take the pictures today advised me that, uh, there used to be, uh, same type of screening which is perforated with, uh, advertisement on the exterior side of it.
Entonces, eh, yo pensé que era bueno que yo traje era también el que yo quiero poner, que me lo hizo un diseñador para ver si lo puedo poner.
I want to propose the same type of covering that it used to have in order, uh, with advertisement in order for my new business.
Hmm, solo quiero mostrar mi imagen corporativa ahí porque nosotros somos una empresa en crecimiento. Llevamos doce años o más en esa misma cuadra y no quiero como perder mi clientele porque me moví, eh, cinco, un poquito más. Yo estaba antes en el sesenta y dos, sesenta, y tenía las imágenes. Simplemente quiero ponerlo más bonito y en el lado de acá para no perder la clientela que.
My business is a growing business and I don't want to lose the clientele that I had. I used to be at sixty to four twenty-four where the previous location I had had this type of signage.
Okay, Mr. Pena, I'm a little confused. Uh, the signs are already up? They've been installed, like the Fajas Colombianas?
The box sign, the box sign is the only thing that's there that says, uh, uh, Fajas Colombianas because there was a previous box sign for the business that was there before.
Okay.
And they already inserted the, the, the laminate with the Fajas Colombiana sign. The additional that he hasn't installed yet is the Belesa Feminina, which are the, in the architectural letters that this board prefers for that type of signage. Between those two signs, you have twenty-one point three eight square feet of the forty-three allowed. I explained, or my secretary explained to him this afternoon that this type of signage is not allowed anymore on the windows.
Okay, you're referring to the screening?
The screen on the windows.
And, and all those Viajes a Cuba, that's been gone, right?
That's all the, uh, you have the, right behind the application, there's pictures from this afternoon where all that's been removed.
And, uh,
Oh, I don't have that.
One, the Bea- Belesa Feminina, that's an additional to the box sign that's there now.
Correct.
And that's gonna be, and how is that gonna be? Is there gonna be also a, a larger box sign or?
No, one inch PVC architectural letters.
Okay, one inch PVC.
To know, at this point, he's also asking for, uh, for the Fajas Colombianas lettering.
That's, that's already up, yes.
That's already up, but he didn't request a, a permit to.
Correct. They assumed that because of the box there, they could change their face.
Now, okay. Was this box installed with a permit previously?
Yes.
It was. Um, can it now be removed?
The box?
The box. So, so that individual letter is similar to the Belesa Feminina, Feminina is, is installed.
As far with the same depiction of, uh, Fajas Colombianas?
Yeah, 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 but without the box.
Right.
Same type of letters.
Architectural letters, correct.
Belesa Feminina.
I understand.
Use it for Fajas Colombianas. And remove the, the box and the electrical outlet that it's on the wall.
Correct.
Eh, la junta le está pidiendo que la, la caja que dice Faja Colombianas, esa le pusieron el letrero sin permiso todavía. Eh, eliminar la caja completa y poner, eh, lo mismo, Faja Colombiana, pero en letras, en vez de, en vez de la caja esa que tiene alante el negocio.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
He's an agreement.
Are these illuminated letters?
No.
They're not.
No, they're not.
Letters.
One inch raised, right? One inch raised?
Right.
So how do people find them at night? Because there's no other lighting in there.
Well, there's area parking, uh, lighting from the parking lot lights.
So that electrical conduit and the electrical box will be gone?
If that's what he, he's agreed to.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eh, pero lo que dice realmente tiene, o sea, no tendría luz ahí para nada, o sea, de noche no se vería el aviso mío. Bueno, eso es lo que preguntó la, la, la miembro de, de la junta, pero como le expliqué, ahí hay luces de, de la calle ocho y luces de parqueo que alumbran todo el parqueo. Eh, en, en ese parqueo, si yo apago el aviso que dice Fajas Colombianas, no se, no se ve casi cuando no tienen la luz. O sea, el, el aviso estaba igualito. Yo lo único que hice fue quitar unas letras de, o sea, eso es una, un pegón, una calcombría. Exacto, pero, eh, el, el, como le explicamos hoy por la tarde, la secretaria me la trató de explicar. Cuando se cambió la ordenanza, uh, de signs nueva, la ciudad está tratando de alejarse de los letreros antiguos que se permitían. Esto es uno de los que no le gusta a, a la junta, de, no le da, eh, el definido que está buscando la junta esta para el área comercial. Y por eso le estoy, eh, explicando que la caja esa, aunque usted ya le puso las letras, no está permitida para el negocio suyo porque era para el negocio anterior. Entonces ellos lo que, si se lo permiten, lo quieren permitir, pero con las letras. Y no puedo poner ningún tipo de luz ahí para que se vea lo que dice ahí. Usted puede alumbrar la área, pero no, no, no el tipo de letrero. Ya. O sea, puedo poner dos luces alumbrando el, el sign. Sí. Algún tipo de spotlight dando la luz directa, sí. Okay.
I explained to him that the city is trying to move away from the type of box signs that, uh, is, they're installed, that that was previously installed under, for a previous business, and that he can go ahead and, if he decides to illuminate it indirectly with, uh, spotlights or any type of other lighting.
Would, that would have to be, um, permitted and?
Of course.
Yeah.
The electrical work would have to be permitted.
And, uh, the area that it would be coming from would be from the top down or from the bottom up or?
That would be, be determined, I guess, by him and the electrician at that point. Uh, using obviously whatever existing electrical service is available there.
Do you know if there's an existing lighting?
There is existing available for the box signs, so.
No, no, I know, but is there an existing lighting?
The building has.
Indirect lighting?
The building has existing lighting that lights the parking lot and, and, uh, A Street, uh, streetlights.
Another, another, is there another store that has indirect lighting on, like, what he's?
There are some in the, on Sixty Seventh that have that type of lettering with that type of lighting, yeah.
And he wouldn't wanna do the lighting inside the actual letters?
También tiene la opción, le está dando la, la miembro de la junta, la opción de poner otro tipo de letra donde la luz puede ser interna a través de, de la, de la letra es, eh, misma. Sí, pero entonces no se podría usar PVC, tendría que ser otro. No, tuviera que ser de otro material. Como el que había antes, ahí que hay Travel Looks. Antes era una de letras que tenía el. Exacto. No, me sale muy costoso. Yo pongo.
He, he understands, but it's much more expensive.
All right. So Ms. Rude, your question or, or your suggestion was, again, to remove the box sign and replace it with, uh, lettering and, uh, and allowing the Belesa Feminina sign on top?
Correct, both, both signs.
Both signs.
Same type of letter.
Same type of letter.
Right. Okay, and then the screening, uh, on the window?
The screening's not allowed by ordinance.
It's all.
Okay. All right, you wanna make that into a motion or?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign with the following, uh, changes. The removal of the junction box and electrical outlet and cables that you have currently on the wall feeding the, um, the, the sign box. Removing the sign box and instead the Fajas Colombianas, uh, place it in a form similar to the Belesa Feminina. Um, the same type of individually mounted letters. And I guess also the, um, the logo, the BF on the top would be defined.
Okay.
Oh, and no, and no, uh, the, uh, proposed screening on the windows is not allowed.
I agree with that second that.
Okay, on the motion, Hibeto Gonzalez, as I'm jumping seats.
Yes.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Álvaro Lurido.
Yes.
And Diana Rio.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Que solo aprobaron con las condiciones que hablamos, las letras individuales para todo el letrero. Y lo de, lo de la vitrina, lo de los vidrios? No. Y que puedo poner los vidrios porque yo no, o sea, yo quiero preguntar por qué tantas personas que es, en este mes han puesto, que yo he visto, si se los han permitido y a mí, por qué no? Eso no, no, no es una tópica para esta junta y número uno y número dos, eso tiene que reportar solo a Charlie donde usted dice que dan puestos sin permiso para, para el. ¿Qué puedo poner ahí para poder en, en los vidrios? En los vidrios, lo único que puede ocultar es el vidrio si quiere, pero es lo único que puede hacer. Ya. Uh, no puedo poner imágenes de ningún tipo en los vidrios. Ni siquiera un cincuenta por ciento, porque me había hablado, eh, creo que habían dicho que era un treinta y cinco por ciento que estaba permitido. No, un treinta por ciento está permitido para el letrero del negocio. Ya, en los vidrios, nah. Nah. Ni, ni tampoco puedo poner letras en los vidrios. Letra individuales. Sí, como las que había antes de Viajes a Cuba o. Nada, nada que sea, eh, advertising porque tiene que venir bajo otra aplicación a la junta para que se lo prueben. Ah, pero puedo pasar la aplicación. Puede intentarlo. Puede intentarlo. Pero es legal, el, esos vidrios son legales. Los vidrios son legales. No, los vidrios sí, pero. The issue is just for the record. Uh, this is not before the board. Uh, esto no está en este momento en, enfrente de, de la, del, del panel. Usted tiene que hacer una nueva aplicación, tiene que ir, nosotros no podemos ir si es legal o ilegal porque depende la aplicación que ustedes. Usted tiene que ir a ver al, al señor Pena y hacer una aplicación y discutir con ellos, entonces vuelve aquí al board. You have to go before Mr. Pena. This is outside of the purview of the application at this point. Uh, you're not allowed just to come in here and, uh, amend, uh, your existing application. Okay. You have to go out to see Mr. Pena, and then Mr. Pena will advise you one way or the other, and, uh, it will come back to the, uh, uh, zoning board. Okay.
Can I, can I, may I ask him something off the record? I mean, this is not part of the.
Cannot be off the record.
Okay, on the record, uh, why would you rather have your, your product obscured by this film? Why don't you just put like mannequins inside the place wearing the fajas or bras or whatever?
Yeah, that, that would be outside of the purview of this application. I respectfully suggest that, uh, Leave it out for, uh, for Mr. Pena to determine and bring it out before the board.
For another day.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Gracias.
That would be a very subjective issue whether or not he would want to one way or the other. Uh, it has to be objective according to what is written on the, on the, on the ordinance.
No, I just mentioned it because as a, as a business owner, I would like to show off my product, not, you know, do a nice setup where you have the mannequins.
Like three doors more with, with mannequins and everything. That's like another store.
Well, you bring it out to, you bring it out to, uh, to Mr. Pena. You try, don't disturb Mr. Pena, okay?
Next item is agenda item number two. As, uh, we've been doing for quite a while, reviewing discussion of the proposed ordinance amending sections of the two eighty-two ordinance. Uh, this was the last section where we left off. However, there are some board members of the, uh, city commission that would like to speed up the process, and that's why you have a new book next to you. Uh, we've gone through a lot of stuff that's in the book already, and, um, they want this done as soon as possible because of all the interest in the, in, uh, redevelopment and development around the city. Uh, they want to be able to have a document where you can go and actually find things that are easier to read than what we currently have, and the vagueness in the old ordinance. So, uh, we had, uh, out of this, we've already done, uh, section twenty-two, which is the, in the sign ordinance, and we also looked into the section four, which was, uh, regulations of, for our one and our two properties. And this was the next section, which was where we left off the last time. Uh, I understand that one of the board members from the city commission has, um, a desire to pass a, a new ordinance regarding swimming pools.
Yes, as a matter of fact, uh,
Above ground swimming pools.
Above ground swimming pools, which is not defined in, uh, the, uh, in the existing, uh, ordinance two eighty-two. Uh, I think that this is out of order, by the way. If we go out to the section where it reads, um, uh, swimming pools, that will be on page, uh, one thirteen. It's article nineteen, section nineteen dash one through section nineteen, uh, four, nineteen dash four. This is pretty skimpy, uh, it not really addresses every issue that should be addressed. Uh, for instance, uh, one of the, uh, key elements of a pool is the enclosure. And the enclosure is set forth in the sign order, I'm sorry, in the, uh, enclosures for swimming pools in the, in section sixteen dash four. Walls and fences in public utilities. Uh, I think that that section that deals with, uh, swimming pool, pool enclosures should be relocated and, uh, become a section, uh, for argument's sake, nineteen, uh, dash four. In addition, uh, to me is very clear that pools are pools. Uh, we have to describe that, uh, pool, the swimming pools as a whole, that, uh, people go swimming, et cetera. But nowadays, uh, everybody knows that we have up-ground pools. And, uh, it appears that, uh, I was talking to, uh, the city manager that there are certain areas where people have, uh, placed, uh, swimming pools in front of the house, right?
There was one instance where there was a swimming pool put up. It was, it was done by, um, a property that's, uh, under foreclosure and occupied, from what we believe, by squatters. Uh, there was a pool put in the front setback, which is not allowed under the requirements that we have here. However, uh, in dealing with a property where there's, uh, squatters and you're dealing with a bank that's not a, uh, present landlord, uh, it's pretty hard to get rid of it. Uh, we, we, we were able to bluff our way mostly into having the gentleman remove it, and it got removed, but, uh, they, they wanna make either swimming pools, above-ground swimming pools, uh, harder restrictions to keep them in the back, and also along with any play structures, uh, that you see that people are now bringing to their properties. Uh, these play structures that encompass slides, uh, uh, some type of, uh, of a little house attached to it and stuff like that, they wanna make sure that those things are in this ordinance, placing it in the back of the property, not on, on, and on corner lots, not, not, uh, the side, uh, yard where it could be seen from the, visible from the street.
I would suggest that perhaps we could, uh, label that as a nuisance of being in front of the house. Uh, that, uh, perhaps we could, um, even have court enforcement, uh, enforce the, uh, the physical removal by the city, uh, leaving the property, so, uh, if that, uh, that eventuality occurs. But to me, the setback is nineteen dash three, it, it's pretty clear. Uh, we just have to define it and work out on that, uh, ordinance a little bit. In addition, there's another issue that I understand that there have been play pens, right? Colupio.
Right, play structure.
Play sets.
Right.
Um, installed in front of the homes.
Which is not defined any part in this ordinance.
We just don't want that either. So, I, I think that the, the tracks from the, the entire, uh, city, uh, I mean, the, to have a, a playpen right in front of the house, I, I would not like it to be in a neighbor to have, uh, that in front of my house, you know?
So it's basically up to you whether you wanna continue with section four point three and keep going through this like as we were doing, or, uh, if you wanna take this book, read it, mark it, see what you, because this is, this ordinance is pretty much codified to, eh, everything we have on the books right now, even including the new signed ordinance which was passed is already in here. So, anything that is an objection to, to something that you would wanna discuss, mark it, label that way, and that way we come back at the next meeting and discuss item by item without having to review page by page here.
But I would suggest that specifically in this, uh, two issues that I'm talking about, for you to authorize, uh, uh, at least for you to entertain, uh, suggesting to the city commission to amend the ordinance and, uh, have a, uh, ordinance two eighty-two and have a, an amendment to the ordinance established under the, uh, number one, prohibition of fences, I'm sorry, pools, uh, in front of the house or any structure in front of the house. Because it would retract, it might be, uh, a danger to the community. It could be, uh, in lieu of to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighbors. So I would suggest for you to take a vote and, uh, do that today.
Prior to this ordinance.
Okay.
Prior to the whole two eighty-two ordinance.
Yeah. Do you think?
Well, it's gonna have to be on a separate ordinance then, and then codified into this.
We could, we could do that.
Okay, um, on the setback, um, in section nineteen point three where it's, um, twenty-five feet from the front property line, would that not be, like, you can't put it in the front because most houses are about twenty-five feet, right?
Correct.
Property line.
Or, like I, I explained, eh, in a normal house, we would have been able to enforce this because there was property owners to the property. Here, the property owner was a bank, and the people living in it were squatters. So, we could send all the paperwork in the world, wasn't gonna make, do any difference. What Mr. Villalobos, uh, suggested is that we also include that any type of, uh, swimming pool that, that is placed in the front prop, in the front of the property be declared a nuisance right away, so we could attack it under nuisance.
As a matter of fact, uh, specifically about underground, uh, over-ground pools, but any structure which is not inconsistent with, uh, ordinance two eighty-two, uh, to be declared a nuisance, uh, so we could, uh, immediately take care of it.
Such as play, uh, play equipment, slides, swings?
Anything.
So what would happen on a property, like, I think there's a double lot on twelve and sixty-something? The house is really set back, really, really far back.
Eleven ten, eleven ten sixty-third.
If the owners wanted to do a pool, an in-ground pool, then they would maintain the twenty-five feet and you would still see it from the street?
That's correct.
So what would happen in that case?
That's it, that's, that's a non-conforming property.
He would have to come in and get a variance from that?
No, he would actually be able to build a pool in front, because the, but the property as it sits, its grandfather, there's no alterations to the property.
Okay.
And the ability to stay the twenty-five feet back, which is what's required. The only thing that we may be able to enforce at that point is some type of screening.
Right.
And, okay, at the twenty-five feet?
Correct.
That's the old fire station, right?
That's correct. Uh, even though I doubt that scenario would ever play out because the property is used as a, uh, as a rental property and the owner has no intent of improving it for themselves.
And a few years ago, they tried to split the lot, right? They wanted to build three, three properties there, was it?
Yes.
And I think the board denied, uh, the three, the lot split to three, only.
Correct, the commission didn't allow it. All right.
So the, the, what would be deemed nuisance?
I'm sorry?
What would be deemed a nuisance?
Any structure in the front.
Any structure in front of the, uh, property and, uh, not, uh, in accordance to the setbacks, uh.
A basketball hoop?
I'm sorry?
A basketball hoop?
Well, that's a good point. Well, let me tell you something.
That can be.
I'm just saying, I have one, I have one.
That can be.
What's that?
That could be.
That's what I'm saying, can we define what a nuisance is?
Oh, of course, yeah.
I guess that if it's a permanent one, yes, but if it's a portable one, like.
There's, I, I don't see a problem with it.
There's, there's, well, the, the difference between a.
There's plenty of portable ones and corrugables.
The, the, the difference between a portable one and a permanent one is just taking it off the, the portable stand and mounting it on your, on your, on the wall of your house, so.
Or set the post in concrete.
Exactly. Because I've had both in my house, and I could tell you that I have now an eleven-year-old nephew that every time he comes, he loves to play with it.
Yeah, I have, I have no place other than that spot in my house with concrete.
Uh, you need concrete to be able to dribble.
Concrete to play.
And I've seen somewhere where they don't have it and they've actually brought it out to the street.
That is not permanent, is it?
No.
Okay, it's portable.
It's portable.
Okay, we're talking about permanent issues.
Okay.
We're talking about, uh.
Yeah, that's right.
No, even if it's a, a permanent one, I, I don't see a problem with it either.
Yeah, because at that point, a permanent one's become a nuisance that are already installed.
That.
What about?
Exactly.
Portable swimming pool?
Well, it's like, he says you could define the nuisance and just specify what you don't want. Play structures, uh, above-ground swimming pools, anything like that, and, and, and define the nuisance so that it's specific to that concern.
But I, I, I could be creative and do that, uh, but as I say, it would be, uh, quite, uh, more difficult to move a, an up-ground, uh,
Yeah, I know.
A swimming pool than a.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so then, Mr. Villalobos, you would be writing the actual ordinance and including what would be specifically prohibited? In, in.
I would need a laundry list there, but.
Also, first, it's basketballs.
What I would do is, I have, uh, some exceptions. I'm, I'm sure that, uh, first of all, I have to admit that I have not thought about that one.
Yeah.
That is a good point. I never thought that would be a problem.
Well, that's why I, I, I said, I made it a point because I know, you know. Well, that's why I I said I made it a point, because I know, you know, nuisance can be a very wide range of of items and.
I have a flagpole in front of my house, is that a nuisance?
Exactly, exactly.
I used to have a portable basketball, I don't anymore, but now the neighbors do and they actually set, my son plays all the time, they play no court across the street.
There was a case, there was a case in Channel Seven, Alvin Howard, where they have the same problem with the basketball court, like four weeks ago, and the guy had it for his kids to play and then the city commission had a whole argument about it and eventually had to move it to a place that it was a public land.
But it, but I think that one was in the street, wasn't it?
Well, no, it was his his own driveway, and then he moved it to the other side, he had a circle in front of his house, so he put inside the circle.
On a cul-de-sac, he put it in?
Yeah, but it was portable, that was the key, that's why I remember, it was a permanently portable, so the guy rolled it in and rolled it out.
Oh, but he rolled it in and out, but he played on the street, though, that's, I think, I think that's what it was, yeah, that that that's a problem.
That's the problem.
That I could see.
Yeah, we can be flexible, I mean, see, after all, you know, this is something that is prevalent throughout the United States, I mean, we just don't want to be, in Enclave whereby we would be applying very strict ordinances that have no sense.
Right.
I know Plaza has that.
I will.
It's pretty close to here, celebration.
I wish I had City West Miami Court Enforcement and Court Order. Where I live, I'm told that there's no budget, that there cannot be inspectors, that what I know that is illegal, it's legal and absolute blight is okay and whatever, you know, so I wish I had this and just around my home. But anyway.
Okay.
Uh, do you have to take a vote tonight?
Yeah, I mean.
Then you'll take this book home and study it and bring it back and.
Mark it up, mark it up.
Okay, so what would be, what would we be voting on tonight?
The the ordinance that he's going to propose for nuisance in the front.
Well, you're not proposing, you're not voting on the ordinance, you're voting on the idea that I'm going to prepare an ordinance.
On the request?
Correct, it'll come here first and then I'll go to the city commission.
Oh, yeah, make a motion.
Okay, to approve the request?
To, yes, to get the ball started.
Certain structures nuisance.
The ball rolling.
Okay, I'll second the motion, under motion Eugenio Gonzalez?
Yes.
Uh, Hibeto Gonzalez?
Yes.
Diana Rio?
Yes.
Álvaro Lurido, and I vote yes.
Okay, on the rest of the, on this part of the, the town, the docket, do you want to continue with this, or you want to go through the book first and then come back?
First, I think.
Did you want to address the pool?
Come back?
Is that something that, I mean?
No, the pool is going to be addressing the nuisance.
Okay.
We're going to include that any above ground pools that are placed in the front setback of the property or the side exterior setback on corner lots be declared nuisances.
Is there anything else that needs to be added to the the pool ordinance besides the the, I think, didn't you want to add something to nineteen dash four with regards to?
Pool safety?
No, it was enclosures.
That that would. As a matter of fact, it's just renumber section nineteen dash four, I'm sorry, renumber section in page 107, which has swimming pool enclosure.
Move that to nineteen?
I'll put it on nineteen. Such consistent.
Right, I I think we could do that.
Yeah.
Right.
One oh seven, the last one, the last bar.
The B.
The B.
Right, move B to nineteen.
Five B to nineteen dash four.
Even though this is a little bit repetitive because we have it in our in our city code.
Right.
And also the Florida Building Code addresses that subject.
I'm sorry?
Then also the Florida Building Code addresses the subjects, so have to comply when they, if somebody pulls a permit to build a new.
Correct.
In-ground pool or above ground.
Actually, this this one is more an old-fashioned barrier, they have now where you don't really need a fence, you just need that perimeter.
Right, fencing.
Fencing that allows you to have an open, in an open area, but just with the perimeter fencing.
What Coral Gables did is they kept the actual enclosure, the fencing, as part of the zoning code.
Right.
So you still need that.
Required.
Regardless, but in the county, you can get away with the little kitty fence.
Exactly.
Well, we call it a kitty fence, or if you put a door and window alarms to all the doors and windows that lead to the pool area, then you don't need the fence.
The fence.
That's the the Florida Building Code.
Right.
But Gables, you still need the fence.
I would just notice also that the county is going to enact some ordinance pertaining to underground lighting. They already did. What? They already did. This week, right? Mm-hmm. So we we could also incorporate that as a safety feature.
So then you're going to take the book, mark it up and bring it back?
With the board think.
That will be the final thing to do?
I think so, let us go over it and mark it up and then we come back with suggestions.
Okay, we need to do this, like I said, have it back by the next meeting, we get a bunch of requests for zoning information and it's hard to pinpoint people to the different ordinances that have superseded a lot of stuff in the book, so this book has all the superseded stuff in there, we just want to see if we could finally push this through to get the new zoning ordinance 282 approved.
And where we left off was forty, 4.3.
We left off at 4.3, correct.
Okay.
But 4.3 doesn't, this 4.3 doesn't actually coincide with the where where it's at here, here, if you look at in the index, you'll be able to find it, it'll be under a new section, because when this was, when this book was codified, everything was put into separate sections for expansion, for future expansion, so if you look at the title where it says C use districts, under the, under the, under your your index, that'll take you to a new page and and the section might not be 4.3 anymore, it'll be a new section.
Okay.
Okay? Section 4.3 will become nine point, nine dash four, once you adopt this book. Okay?
Okay.
So Mr. Bennett's time is kind of like of the essence here, you want to go ahead and just schedule that meeting, if there's any other items on the agenda?
We we have that meeting because we have another variance coming in the March, in the March meeting.
Okay.
So we'll we'll be having the March meeting because we have business.
Okay.
So we'll do the variance first and then we'll go into the book.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, we don't need to make a motion on that.
No, that's the last item on your docket then.
Okay, the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Meeting of February 24th, 2015 is now adjourned, it is 8:10 PM for the record.